The Court of Selectmen's meeting for February 5th, 2018, Quail Creek order. Anybody here for public discussion? And anybody taped in the meeting other than Free Cam and the Board of Selectmen? Public discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Nottingham Way. Are they ever gonna fix the water problem coming out of the end of the road? I know Chuck McManus probably hasn't said anything about it, right? Everybody keeps slamming into the bridge down there because the drains on this side of Nottingham Way and the water rolls out this side down the road, runs right down to the bridge. So it's the slip and slide every morning with the ice.
The last time I think the bridge was hit, it wasn't an ice issue, but I know what you're saying.
Just last time. You can follow the ice trail right now.
You can see the ice trail come down there. I was even concerned just that part of the bridge is still missing.
Right.
If somebody did that again.
If you look at the drain, the drain's on South Main Street over here and the water just runs out like this and it goes this way. It doesn't even go to that drain. I mean, they need a drain on the other side of the road for it to go into.
Yeah, really the road needs a crown so it doesn't cross the road, but I think that's a little harder to build down the road. So there's some we can send a letter to Chuck, ask him about it and see what we can do to remedy that situation. He's right, the water does, especially that whole melt area comes right down to the side of the bridge.
The way they took over the church thing there.
Yep.
All the ice is melting, all the snow's melting the other side of the road and it's all just flowing out and it goes, like it says, it goes right by the drain. It runs right down the side of the road. If they put another drain on the side of the road on the other side, it would probably go in it.
Okay.
Is that, I wonder if it could be part of the project?
If we have to open up that road, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
So maybe it's made it be part of the project if Chuck can't take care of it simply.
They upgraded all that in the seventies.
Supposedly we don't really know anything about it, so do.
Nothing that we can publicly talk about.
The only thing we're waiting to get is the thing from the court and supposedly we have that tomorrow. We haven't, we don't have it.
You don't know anything about the DEP come up with the other day when they were sitting out there and the smoke was pouring through the community and stuff?
Well, we had the testing units out there.
Great, but we haven't heard from them.
No, we haven't, no. We're not gonna be here for at least one or three weeks.
But it was a perfect day for it because there was plenty of smoke in the area.
Yeah, we actually.
It's a perfect day every day for it if you were at my house.
But if the wind conditions were wrong, you know how they, with their ideal conditions and all this other stuff. This was a perfect day.
We even had three little explosions that day.
Yeah.
But there was no massive ones like there was the other week because that's when Charlie was down at the church and he felt it down at the church. Okay, so that's how, I mean, when people are saying it's an explosion, it's not like it's a cat gun going off. I mean, this thing rocks. This thing rocks your house.
It happened when you guys were there though, right? You weren't there.
I wasn't there. I, I, I have yet to experience an explosion.
Yeah, when they said there was three small ones that went off when they were there.
If those are small, at least they heard them.
Yeah.
Oh, there was things reported during that.
Yeah.
Oh, the smoke was so thick, it was like, I mean, that's nothing new. That's what we've been dealing with all this time and you talk to the DEP. Talk to the DEP and they just like, oh, you're exaggerating.
Right, and now, now they saw it, so.
Yeah, I mean, at the end, Savio said, texted my, told my wife that. It's gonna be coming from somewhere else because they've been trying to make it happen over there and they can't seem to make an explosion. She's like, about throw a propane tank in there and try that? Oh, no, we didn't try that. But you ain't trying too hard to make one, are you?
But as soon as we know something and we can release the information, then we definitely will, but I don't know why it's taken so long to get that, but I, I contacted council today and they said that it should be done tomorrow.
All right.
All right.
About all I have for you.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to see you there.
Not a problem.
Yeah, you did.
No.
No, I was good.
I wasn't going to. All right, so tonight we have discussed, a discussion on proposed renovation of Bristol County Agricultural High School, discuss Lake Cam and Mick Cam agreements and possible renewal. We vote to determine the final language for the ballot question, discuss Department of Conservation and Recreation Chase Road Project, approved Board Selectmen Minutes for January 16th, 23rd, 23rd, and 26th. Discuss declaring surplus property, approve senior workoff program participants, approve and sign VEDAR accounting software for the cloud, sign a mattress grant contract, sign a container contract for the transfer station, approve ambulance abatements for the month of December 2017, approve the signing of the annual Patriot Calf Marathon, Triathlon, rather, for June 16th, approve signing the annual Cranberry Tri-Fest for August 25th and 26th, and also the annual Tour de Creme on, on May 20th. Have the town administrators report, discuss dates to meet with the unions to renegotiate contracts, and then the personnel board has two changes passed. With that being said, let's go right into discussion on proposed renovation of Bristol County Agricultural High School.
Okay, the, the Bristol County is gonna be holding a second vote on February 8th to vote on the bond and the project for the renovation of the school. The school was built in 1912, it's 270 acres, there are 27 buildings on two sides. The reasons stated for the renovation include severe overcrowding, as you said, the school capacity currently is defined as 350 students, the current population is 450. They're also looking at replacement and renovation and modernization of school facility systems and replacement and/or addition of obsolete buildings to provide a full range of education programs that want to expand into different areas than they're currently in. Number of the buildings, I went on the tour on January 5th, none of the buildings are retrofitted classrooms, classroom space from barns, one was a turkey coop. They're basically no longer functional, a lot of the classroom space is too small for the classes. In terms of the project itself, it's being proposed, it's $103,750,000. The actual construction cost is $79,748. And they're building it up with a factor of .30 as a contingency, so that's the difference between 79 and 103. They're going to the school building assistance board and they're gonna get a reimbursement rate of 49% or $50 million, $50,600,000. So the amount that they have to borrow is $53,150,000. The yearly debt service for 30 years is gonna be $2,373,143 each year, given a rate of 2%. They're looking at the debt per pupil as being $5,070, but they're anticipating that that amount is gonna go down over time for a period actually of five years or so as the student population increases from 468 to 612. So at the end of the four-year period, that debt will then be $3,595. That's an assumption. Right now, the, the town through its cherry sheet is assessed $140,891 for the students attending Bristol Aggie. We also have other assessment costs in the amount of $21,170. We have 10 students currently at Bristol Aggie, so the, just factoring those two things together, the per student assessment is $16,206. Now, in the discussion that I had, actually Lisa also, with the county regarding how that debt is gonna be assessed, it's gonna be added on top of our current assessment. So whatever that number is of 5,070 or the 3,595 will be added on top of our existing assessment. They've chosen, they've had, they had a number of options they reviewed in the feasibility study. They chose option number, or letter number C, which involves full renovation of Gilbert Hall, gym, auditorium, classrooms, full renovation of the agricultural mechanics building into classes and labs, full renovation of the pole barn, lab and space landscaping, a smaller addition to the floriculture building, a new site, a new center for science and the environment. Total square footage is gonna be 193,000 square feet, 99 of which is gonna be used, is gonna be new and 93 which is gonna be renovated. So that's a short synopsis of what's happening with the project. They are moving forward. I attended the meeting on the 5th. They did have a vote at that meeting, unfortunately. The vote lacked a quorum and as a result, they're calling for a new vote on Thursday evening. Bob is the representative on behalf of the town. I know that at the previous meeting, the vote was unanimous, well, not unanimous, with one abstention, which was me, and one negative vote. So the board really needs to take a position on whether it's something that we support or not support and to give direction to Bob in terms of how we should vote. Lot of information.
Yeah, and we've been, all, all three of us have been following this right along and I think that by the time we got our last email, they were hesitant to say that this was, the $5,700 was on top of already the per student cost. And that, that, that 5,700, that's, that's a floater. That's, that's not an actual number.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we only had six students in, but we have four of 10, so we pay for 10, whether we have 10 or six or three.
I was just told that we had 10. I didn't hear any other number, but that could be, that could be correct. So there's a 10 student minimum?
Well, that's the cherry, I believe that's, the cherry sheet carries a 10.
All right. Yeah, that's where I get the, we get the 10 students, we have 10 of those.
Kim will know. Kim has the actual, because she's the one that pays the bills, so she'll know exactly how many students we have. But I mean, $103 million.
$103 million.
Is, is an astronomical number.
And if finding, if, if they don't get the 49%, whatever, what is it, how much?
Actually, it's 48.7 and I just rounded it to 49.
49 million, if that doesn't come through.
No, 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 the, oh, I'm sorry, the, the amount they're gonna borrow is 53.
Not the viral amount, the.
No, what is the reimbursement that we're gonna state?
Reimbursement is 50 million.
What's the percentage?
It's 49%.
49%.
We don't, if they don't get the 49% from the state, the rest of it's gonna be funded on the backside of the towns. So, which is a concern, major concern. We've seen them do things like this before, but if the state say they're gonna fund that one number and fund it a different number when it comes, they end up, to close.
I, to be fair, I haven't seen that happen with this, any of the school building projects that we've done. So once they signed off on it, they signed off on it, but I don't know about any other projects in the state of Massachusetts. We've been fortunate to do it when we did it, when the state had the money, but you're right, if the state doesn't have the money, then, then what happens? And that would be a question that I definitely want an answer to.
They actually, in, in the letter, it was referenced that there was the reimbursement rate which they were using, but there was another rate, reimbursement rate of 61%, which is their optimal rate. So I don't know how those two numbers.
Whether it's a calculation or.
Yeah, whether they, if they do certain things, that they get more, I'm not pretty sure of.
What's the viral rate that they're using?
They're using 30 is 2%.
2%.
2%, it's never gonna be 2%. It's never gonna be 2%.
Could elect to run at 2% if you know.
Right now, we know today it's not 2%. So, so that 5,700 will definitely increase.
So the reason I asked David to put it on beside the presentation, which we all had those emails anyhow, was to get, like David said, to get a vote from the board to move forward.
You know what, we don't fund the schools that we have right now to the full amount and, you know, we're in the midst of trying to build a police station, new police station in town, and I just don't see us having the, unfortunately, I think it's, it isn't a foreign project, we just don't think that we have the funds available right now and I think there, for me, there are a lot of unanswered questions and I feel like, basically, I know that it was on your shoulders, you and David, I mean, I think they, you went there for a presentation and all of a sudden you're like, wait, they're voting on something.
That's what they booked for, is two presentations, they cut the second one and said, no, we're gonna have a vote that day.
Right.
And a lot of other neighboring communities had the same issue that, you know, there was time given ahead of time, but it wasn't a lot of time given ahead of time to, to, to change the agenda. So a lot of towns didn't show up and that's why there's a question on the quorum issue. So.
So at this time, personally for me and with the lack of information, the cost structure and not knowing about the reimbursement from the state, I'd have to, I'd have to say that I'd be opposed to this project right now.
Okay, make that as a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Actually, can you make that as a motion?
I'll make it as a motion.
And I'll second it?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair can't make a motion, that's why. All we need is.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So you're both going on the eight?
Are you going, David?
I, I wasn't planning on going, but I don't want, I don't want, be the guy.
You wanna take any shot? No, no problem.
Thanks. The guy that created the lack of quorum.
I didn't see your name on the newspaper at all.
I know, though, yeah, I'm surprised. When you've mentioned it, I wouldn't look at it.
I'm gonna have to go look at it now.
Thanks.
All right, discuss Lake Cam and Mick Cam agreements and possible renewal.
Okay, we have, we received in Middleborough's proposal for the next five years for the governmental portion of the cable services. And we also had previously discussed with Lake Cam, the educational portion. And as a result, we've got a proposal from Lake Cam, which I forwarded to the board and it spells out, you know, the acquiring contract and the different options. And one of the things that came to light was that according to Lake Cam, the cost of the services that they provide to the school department, which is the regional school committee, finance school committee, the high school event and sports coverage, Old Colony events, sports and all of that kind of thing, and then airing the program seven to 21 times. The real cost of that is $35,000 a year and they've only been charging us $5,000. So what they have proposed is that they framed out a proposal that has several options, each increasing in what they will do for us in terms of providing additional cable services on the government side, like having, you know, talk shows and doing all that. However, option one, which is in the amount of $34,000, I think in terms, for us at least, I think is the most feasible. There's a couple of things that the board should be aware of. In option one, we share the Lake Cam educational channel, which is Comcast 20 and Verizon Channel 30. Lake Cam will continue to provide the same extensive service. Freetown pays one-six of the, of the new, I guess they bought a new broadcast server cost, which was $6,000, plus $16,000 a year for 45% of the EDU channel coverage cost and production cost. And on the government side, they, they're saying that we're gonna, we can still continue to operate the way we operate, but it won't be with Middleborough. We'll operate using our own equipment. Hopefully, we're gonna have to continue to have and pay stipended volunteers to cover, edit and encode the programming, but they will then put it up for us. So the total cost, and once again, they're asking for a sixth of that in terms of $6,000 for the server cost. So the first year cost is $34,000, which is, includes the $12,000 capital payment for the broadcast server, which is six on the educational side, six on the governmental side. And then the operating cost of 20, from then, starting in year two, will be $22,000 for a year.
For total five years?
For five years. The only question I have about that is I don't know if we can enter into a five-year, a couple of things. One is that our cable contract is up 2020 and there may be some possibility that we can do something internally at that point as a negotiating part of the contract. Number two, I don't believe we can enter into a contract greater than three years without approval of town meeting, so we couldn't do a five-year contract anyway. Currently, right now, we have $63,078 in the cable access account. We are paid up with Middleborough, paid up with Lake Cam. Right to date, we've used $8,669 for taping costs and the initial fees that they required for the half-year. And in addition, we're gonna be, we expect that we'll be doing 21 more meetings under $50 for $3,150. So we expect that we're gonna have $11,819 in costs, so we really have a balance in the account of $59,928. So we can actually do the contract, but the thing that's gonna happen is that we will have to notice Middleborough that we're no longer gonna be using their server and their services, that Lake Cam will be providing it on the government side. I don't know of any other option. We actually explored doing it internally, but we still, we still have, with the school, you know, I don't know, we'd have to either buy the programming off of them, I'm not sure that they would agree to that, so we're, we're kind of.
Then we have to have programming, we have to have editing, we have to do all that.
We do have a studio, which I didn't know we had. We have a small studio over at the elementary school and, and I would like to see as part of the contract negotiation, us doing something with that and getting some money to get that up and running and, you know, do some local programming that won't cost us money.
So what, what was our current contract? How much more were we paying?
$5,000 for Middleborough, $5,000 for Lake Cam.
And then us like.
And then everything in terms of paying the additional money for the people to come and tape it and up, to the SD cards and the software and things like that.
All right, and then you said.
For option one, we'd still have to pay the, our own taping costs and all that and the additional $22,000 a year for the.
And then who's gonna edit it?
Yeah, option one, they do the editing.
They do, yeah.
Um, no, option one, we still have to pay.
We still have to do the editing, not that I heard from David.
All they do is encode and ingest.
But the, I don't think that the editing is a big part of that because we, we own the software, right? And it's only putting titles in, right, you know, and shutting the camera off and painting it black and.
Sweeps and stuff. Option two, can you go over option two real quick? Similar to option one, but a little, little more.
All right, option two, we share the Lake Cam educational channel, they provide the same service, same deal in terms of the $6,000 for the new broadcast. And then they, we share the Lake Cam government channel. They find the, the stipended volunteers, the coverage, they, they edit, encode and ingest. They cover up the four municipal meetings a month. And so it, basically it's $4,000 more. Well, actually, to tell you the truth, that would probably be the better of the deals, considering then we're completely out of it.
Okay, yeah.
What's that?
If that's only four meetings, what do you do?
Yeah, how many meetings? Well, four, you have, you have two, two board meetings, but how about a planned board?
You, you take building, maybe something different.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to see what, if we go over our four, or if we don't use them in one month, do, do they roll over to another month? Is it, what if we go over four, is it, you know, per router, is it, you know, $150 each one over the four, that kind of stuff. But money-wise.
It's ridiculous.
Only $4,000 there, yes.
I think it's ridiculous. I mean, the whole thing is ridiculous.
We're going from 10 to.
Yeah, you're going from 10 to 30.
Well, we'll probably go more than 10.
34?
Probably go up to more.
Okay, so even 15.
10 to 15.
You're doubling. You're doubling the cost of doing this.
But they're claiming that we never fully paid the cost of the educational portion.
No, 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 there, see, this goes back, you have to go dig for, at those meetings that we had because there's more information there that you're missing and I don't, I don't remember right, right now off the top of my head, but we had many meetings about this and there was a reason why. And as a matter of fact, I think they have the equipment that we once owned, so that's another.
They do have our equipment.
Right, so, and I think that we need to do, when do they need to know by?
Well, I had asked both, Tomasz first, that we, so we can have one more meeting and discuss it, if that's what you wanna do. I can, I can do a little bit more of an analysis in terms of the.
You can do that, but see if you can find in the files any notes and I'll go back and look and see if I can find any notes from, from the last contract negotiations because it was with.
That's under the cable advisory agreement or were, you might find it under those minutes instead of the Board of Selectmen, then forward it to the Board of Selectmen.
Right, yeah. Because I think it was with Jack and Reverend Dyke. So.
All right, so we'll put it in.
And I think I have, I think I have emails on it too, so let me see if I can go back and find them. Okay.
So that's, that, my recommendation at this point would be to hold on and look in.
Also, we need to know if we don't take any of these options, what our, what our other options are.
So we don't, if we don't take any, then how are we gonna, we're not gonna have any.
That's the question.
School broadcasting, you're not gonna get the basketball games and football games and.
Well, the cable company has to provide us with three channels. How we get programming onto those three channels is what we're discussing, right?
That, that seems to be the issue in terms of how do you encode it and upload it and the special equipment that's needed to do that. And then we, internally, we have to provide camera people to do that and they're gonna be there anyway, so it's like.
I mean, the school part of it though, they, they pretty much make their own content. I think they're doing some of their own stuff, they're making their own show and stuff. Maybe more this stuff that, you know, how we can take care of that. I don't, I don't know what the options are.
Yeah, I don't know. Let's find that out though. I mean, I, I think the educational part of, you know, is more for the parents and the students and, and not only that, the other reason I wouldn't wanna do a five-year contract is you don't know how obsolete some of this stuff is gonna start to become. I mean, is it gonna be more Facebook oriented, is it gonna be more computer, you know, upload it from the computer, are you gonna be able to watch it live from, live streaming and stuff like that? So, I mean, some of this stuff may become obsolete and we talked about stream, live streaming our meetings.
Yeah, we tried. We didn't have the connection.
Right. All right.
All right, so being next.
We vote to determine final language for the ballot question. So I guess town council had the articles wrong?
Uh, well.
The numbers, so.
Yeah, Article 31, there was no article submitted on that one and.
And then changed to 11.35.
11.35, so I'll make the motion to insert in the language that currently exists Article 31 under the general bylaws and under the zoning bylaws, change the 11.34 marijuana establishments to 11.35 marijuana establishments.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discuss Department of Conservation and Recreation Chase Road Project and potential approval of date and time for a special town meeting.
This hasn't changed much. The last time we met on it, David wasn't here, so I don't know if he actually got the memo to correct, tried to renegotiate the deal a little bit.
Well, we did, we did negotiate, we got it to $60,000.
Correct.
I did talk to Sean. The, Sean still wants the town to be responsible for the smaller items, anything that can be physically picked up. that will be our responsibility to take and dispose of. A larger items that can't be moved by hand, or the, the equipment, the boats and all of that, they're gonna take responsibility for. Uh, they also, um, you know, they, they, we're gonna need three articles to do it, we're gonna need one article to rescind the early vote. We're gonna need to transfer the land from the board to ConSCOM, and then get an authorization to sell the house and lot to the DCR for sixty thousand dollars. And then we also wanna make it subject to all state and local permits and approvals. Uh, in talking to Sean, I know there's been a lot of discussion about, um, potential environmental issues. And, uh, he did forward to me, and I forwarded to the board an environmental report, it was a hundred and thirty-five pages, I'm sure. It, it was quite the document, but in my discussions with Sean, he said that they did do like a, they didn't do any testing in terms of soil samples, that kind of thing, around the house, but they did do, uh, they did walk the lot and look for obvious, uh, uh, potential contamination on top of the soil. They say it's very visible when something has been spilled in the soil, or you know, or is, uh, is an environmental threat. But I, I still would like to have, um, the board, when it decides to send a letter accepting their offer, to include something to this effect, that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, acting by its department of conservation recreation relative to the acquisition of certain town property on Chase Road booking page number, also known as the Proprietor's Way Project, shall hold the town harmless for any and all liability relative to any environmental contamination found on site after the acquisition of the town, of the property from the town of Freetown to, uh, DCR. And that can be, that's just my writing, so I'm sure council can take a little bit better.
I was just gonna ask, so, um...
That, that was what I wrote, but, you know, I would want council to...
Oh, absolutely, yep.
So, you know, it's, I can hurt to, to still try to get it, if they say no, then... The, the, I guess, from the perspective, if we don't go along with the deal, we, we have a property that's nice or that at some point we're gonna have to pay money to take it down, and we'd still face any potential environmental issues that are over there. In this process, we're gonna get the house taken down, they're gonna remove the asbestos and lead. We're gonna get paid sixty thousand dollars for it, and it's gonna be, you know, all the, the property's gonna be cleaned up, there's gonna be a parking lot there, it's gonna be, provide access to, you know, five hundred plus acres of, of, you know, conservation land, so I, I, I see it as a win-win. But the, I can see how the board, you know, with the environmental question, um, still has some reservations.
What I'd be willing to do is include the language you just said, including indemnify the town, not just hold harmless.
And indemnify, good point.
And, um, strike line two out of the one, two, three, four. If we struck line two, environmental contamination beyond what's typical, if that was struck, I'd be fine with it. So it'd only be, one, we'd be responsible for light cleanup, three and four, with two being struck that any environmental contamination found beyond what is typically associated, so they'd be responsible for any contamination.
You think that's how they're gonna meet that?
I think that's the intent of it. The intent of it is, they're, we're only, they're only gonna be responsible for lead paint and asbestos, anything else is gonna be on us.
He, he, Sean did make mention that when they went in the house, that they saw no evidence of any kind of oil-fired furnace. He believes, just based upon the, the fireplaces, they had stoves in the, in the ground.
So wasn't there a salt issue? From town bond, when we had open salt, open salt piles.
I can't guarantee they're gonna, they're gonna, 'cause he said that they never, the state never owes something, you know, to the environmental division. But we can try it.
Yep. So I, I'm gonna make that as a motion, include the language as noted by David and, uh...
With review of Town Council.
With review of Town Council and strike, uh, line two about environmental contamination, so it would be on the state to clean up any environmental contamination problem.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
All right.
Bye. Uh, now you wanna set the town meeting, or you wanna wait until we find any answer from them?
Well, we can still set the town meeting if we go for the later town meeting. It would give us a chance to get anything else.
Wednesday, March, March fourteenth?
March fourteenth, and, which needs to be posted on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
What does, what does the state wanna do with it? They just wanna put a parking lot? Parking lot there to access the land in the back, it's a huge piece in the back that you can walk through and... Right. Be walking trails and stuff. So that's what they want, they wanna just put a parking lot for, like, conservation? Yeah. So my recommendation would be Wednesday, March fourth, well, March fourteenth. Uh, warrants need to be posted by February twentieth.
All right, so...
Can we open the wire on February twentieth? Open and have the articles ready, insert them, and then close it?
On February twenty-eighth?
On the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Uh, well, the next, our next meeting?
The twentieth, I thought, it's the next meeting.
Our next meeting would be the, say, the fifth, till nineteenth?
Twentieth.
Twentieth, 'cause it's a holiday.
Okay.
So we'll have the articles ready, and we'll have, we'll know at that point whether they're gonna agree to the others.
So, um...
You're gonna make that as a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we, um, hold the meeting Wednesday, March fourteenth, six P M, elementary, uh, six P M or seven?
Seven.
Seven P M at the Freetown Elementary School for a special town meeting.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, when we're looking at, um, articles, you have these three articles, we'd want the one for the free cash, um, for the six hundred thousand. Also, well, we said that we would leave it for a hundred thousand in there.
So you wanna do five?
So we'll do five, and then, um, I also want the one for the water line on there.
What about, um, uh, we didn't send, put money in the stabilization, we had movement...
Right, because they weren't there.
One point five and one point five.
Okay.
So we need that too. Okay.
All right, approve board's select minutes for January sixteenth, the twenty-third at nine A M and ten fifteen A M, and the twenty-sixth.
Uh, approve is right.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss declaring surplus property. Thanks, Michael.
The town warrants on March fourteenth, the ballot question for marijuana is March twenty-fourth, and the town election is April second. I'm just like in terms of like...
It sounds like you just nailed it right on.
All right, just making sure.
At least you're paying attention.
It'll be a busy spring.
Yeah. Okay, discuss, do you have that?
Vida, is that what's next?
No, it's, um, discuss, uh, declaring surplus property.
I'm too far, okay, yep.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, in your file, you should have a list of vehicles that should be declared, uh, surplus property. In order to go through the process, in accordance with, uh, thirty B, uh, we need to have the board, uh, ident, well, identified by the list that is surplus property, and then there is a procedure by which, um, we, uh, need to, uh, then put it out to, we have to, I don't know. It's gonna be over ten thousand, we have to post a notice in conspicuous location, two weeks prior to the bid due date or auction. We can do it by sealed bids, or we can do it by an auction. Now, we have to publish notice in a local paper, um, and if it's over a hundred thousand dollars, in com buys, so. I'd like to get moving on this so that we can, um, generate some revenue from the sale of all of these vehicles. And basically clears the lot over at the highway.
Can I have a motion to declare the, um, property a surplus?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Prove senior work on program participants as submitted by council of Adrian Director Bob Mar, before. Have a motion to approve?
Aye, so moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, approve and sign Vedar accounting software five contract. Um, this was basically approved at town meeting to winter, so it's just to sign.
Make a motion to endorse.
Oh, no, second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I'm getting way long. Sign ma- mattress grant contract.
This is a renewal of the same contract we had. I'll make a motion that we re-endorse the contract.
All right, second that, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, uh, sign the container contract for the transfer station.
Um, that's new, right? We're, so we're, we're adding... So I can find it, some contract. So I think it was fourteen thousand was appropriated at town meeting. Um, we sent out for bid, um, which Charlie's not here, actually have the town meeting here. It was fourteen thousand appropriated at town meeting, um, to do some repairs and buy a couple of new containers. Um, bids came back, the lowest bid appears to be twelve thousand dollars, um, to NIMCO LLC, um...
Twelve thousand three hundred.
Top, he has twelve thousand awarded. And down bottom it says twelve thousand three hundred, so I don't know what the difference between the two is, why the three hundred dollars difference?
Well, we'll just approve it for twelve-three.
Twelve-three. So I'll make a motion that we approve for twelve-three, uh, awarding the bid to NIMCO LLC five, proper lien for them.
All right, all in favor?
Okay.
Prove, um, ambulance abatement for December twenty-seventeen. Um, the amount is sixty-two thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents, and the com star and the aggregate amount of fifty-four thousand four sixteen fifty-five, for a total amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, five hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, sign the abatement for one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars, fifty-two cents.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve signing of the twelfth annual Patriot path triathlon for June sixteenth.
Do we know...
Isn't this the one?
Yeah, that had the big meeting and all of this.
Yeah, what's, has there been any changes, or?
I know the fire chief signed off, but I know the police department didn't, because...
We, you weren't there yet, were you here yet?
I believe it was, but we haven't had that meeting, um, the, Mark Walters from Patriot Map have mad, I'm deciding not to go that route this year. He's just gonna go the original route?
The normal route that he wants, okay.
He's, uh, sometimes they're gonna endorse it. Not that that's...
But he's not gonna try to shut a lien down and all that?
He's not gonna shut a lien down.
He's not, we're not doing any of that, that we talked about.
Just like we've had it before.
All right, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to accept.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, approve, um, the seventeenth annual cranberry trifecta for August twenty and twenty-sixth.
We haven't had any complaints on, uh, issues with that one, have we, Al?
No.
Okay, make a motion to endorse the, uh, trifecta.
All right, second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and, uh, turmeric for, uh, May twentieth, twenty eighteen.
Same question, any, any complaints or issues?
No.
Make a motion and we endorse.
Um, the, that's the one that they are...
It's only a pass-through, it only goes through a small...
And that's the one that they're doing the opposite direction on, so...
Oh, all right, sorry.
No, no, that's the way, I'm just sorry, um, all right.
I make motion to endorse.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Town Ministry's report.
Uh, just, the board, uh, has received their two thousand nineteen budget books. Uh, I'm planning on having, uh, a board in FinCon, joint meetings in March, uh, with the department heads, present, uh, at a, at the Selectment slash Finance Committee, uh, meeting. Uh, I've already sat down with each of them and reviewed all of their budgets with them, so, um, I am prepared to help present on behalf of the departments, or if the department heads want to present their own budget, they're welcome to do that also.
Uh, no, I want the department heads here.
No, I, no, I, they're gonna be here.
Oh, all right.
I said, I'd, I'd actually make the presentation if they wanted just to be here to back up with any questions, that's one too. It's their choice, I've done it both ways, the department heads will come in and down their own.
That's how we know, you know, we just come in and do their own.
Yeah.
If they need to, if they want an increase.
Some of these we're not gonna need to see, but I...
Yeah, it's generally the main ones, police fire, um...
Or anybody with a, with a, a huge increase.
That's what we've done in the past, was zero, is, um...
Um, just contracts, just, um, so it was...
Any department that wanted an increase from what they currently have would come and fund this. Anybody else that doesn't need an increase, doesn't need to come and fund it.
In, like I said, the big departments you want to...
'Cause I can already see. Don't look yet.
I haven't. I think they're entertaining reading tonight.
Don't look. No, you'll never see, especially after last night, that's two bad nights in a row, you can read that. All right, anything else?
Uh, I'm starting to work on the streetlight, uh, the LED plan. Uh, contacted Real Energy, uh, they are, they're putting together a proposal to, uh, convert them over. I'm also looking at, uh, and have been working with a gentleman from Plymouth that I worked with, uh, about doing it internally, whether we can do a cheaper that way and get, and get it done. We have, we only ha, we have a small number of lights, it's only ninety-six lights, the budget is ten thousand dollars. But I found it interesting that the difference between the quality of the lights, a sodium vapor light, which is currently what we have out there, uh, in a period of three years, it, it's, uh, luminosity dims to sixty percent. An LED, over a period of twenty-five years, only dims to seventy percent. So you're gonna, you're not gonna be replacing the lights as often as you would previously. So I'm continuing to work on that, I actually have a meeting on Thursday on it. Uh, Free Town Screw, I met with Tracy Koster to talk about the project, going over, uh, the project feasibility study. She said that it's really important in the spring, when we get out there, we delineate the wetlands, because, uh, and the other part is that, having read the proposal, uh, or the feasibility study, the only way to make it, the project work is from a standpoint of financial viability, is to have both pieces of land, if you don't have both pieces. There's no incentive in terms of tax credits for anyone to, to make money and do what you wanna do over there, which is, you know, provide affordable housing. Um, I have the second course for the procurement training, uh, which is called Supplies and Contract Services on March forty through the sixteen. Uh, I did attend the first session, uh, public contracting overview, and there's gonna be one more after this, which is basically on, um, the, you know, on construction practices, which will be extremely helpful with the police station building and, uh, bidding of, you know, construction projects. Um, we also have this, on March twenty-second, there's, and the MMA is putting on a seminar on performance review evaluations. And I know that that was another thing the board had interests in. We have collected some, um, and we were gonna cull together something out of that, but I think I'm gonna attend that session also to try to see what, you know, other towns are using and, and maybe get some ideas as to how we can put ours together. Um, we have a department head meeting set for, uh, February thirteen, and finance team commit, finance team meeting set for two twenty-one, uh, two thousand eighteen. Uh, we had Harper's Personnel System come in, they have a module that, uh, that it attaches or complements our existing payroll system, uh, and it's an excellent method of controlling benefits in terms of, uh, everybody having an idea of specifically what their time is and knowing exactly. It's all coordinated, and it involves another system. I'm gonna have, uh, them come in again and give us a talk before I make a presentation to the board about it. It's relatively cheap, it's about two hundred dollars a month, uh, for the module, and I think it'll solve a lot of the problems that we currently have with...
We'll be able to track comp time and stuff on it too. Could be able to track comp time and stuff like that too.
Comp time, yes, and I actually have some recommendations on comp time, I have, I put together a policy, I should, we just shared it with you.
Yep.
All right, I've shared it with Alan, okay. Um, but, you know, basically frames out what I think, how we should be administering comp time laws. But that's gonna be subject to court targeting as well as incorporated into the personnel by law. Uh, in the town hall, uh, we installed new toilets and a floor in the women's room and we're gonna do a sink in there also, the, it was in a pretty decrepit state. We actually, the toilets are now up to, you know, A D A standard in terms of the height and, uh, you know, like I said, the, the women in the town hall really felt it was something we needed to do and we responded to that. And I'm starting to gather information up for an I T plan. Um, I did contact Community Compact about a grant, they don't do like inventory studies and things like that, so I'm gonna have to do that portion of it first to be able to next year apply for a grant to implement some of the things we wanna do from the plan, so it sort of goes backwards, so, that's it.
Any questions?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, discuss dates to meet with unions during negotiate contracts.
Um, I've reached out to, pretty much all the unions now, um, kinda solicited dates from them to.
Okay.
Send us, let us to begin negotiations, so we can sit down and begin negotiations.
Okay.
You want us to set the date or get, or get some dates or kind of?
You said you, you contacted them.
Just to say, get, to have them stop the process, send us a letter so we can stop the process. We haven't gotten formally, this is the only request, we, we did get one request here from the, um, we did get the one request from the New England Laborers, um, to begin.
Or a dispatch and.
For dispatch and we did have a request for them, from the police that we had to reschedule.
Right.
But those are the only two requests formally we've been getting so far.
Actually, fire came in today.
Fire came in today?
Yeah. Yeah.
I kinda thought they would.
I actually.
We do.
If they, if you wanna give me dates, I can prob, we can probably narrow that one down this month if you want. If you wanna give me dates, I can probably narrow them all down, I have dates from Joe Fair too.
Okay.
Well, just send us the list of dates from Joe Fair and then when you throw them for the next meeting, we'll mail it down.
Okay.
What union have we heard back from yet?
No, we're just bringing in new, for new dates from police.
New dates from police, we haven't heard from town hall workers, right?
Yeah, that is, it's the one here.
That's this one?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, yeah, okay.
But we want to do something different there too.
And we've spoken, I've spoken to the president about that too, they would accept it, so we might be able to do something with that.
All right, that's great. Okay.
All right, um.
So I'm doing now.
Personnel, we have a employee change of status call in for James Gonville, don't we have him like weekly? It's like last three meetings he's gone. James Gon, uh, Gonville, call firefighter, paramedic, um, it's a rehire. I thought we just, he submitted his letter of resignation, it looks like it's a rehire as a call firefighter, paramedic instead of a full-timer at sixteen twenty-four an hour. Submitted by the plant chief.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion, any discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Employee change of status of Stephen Chandler, um, contractual, this is a length of service increase, contractual length of service increase. Senior clerk water sewer from sixteen fifty-nine to senior clerk water sewer to eighteen sixty-three, step three.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion second, motion made in second, any discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor? Aye.
All right, and what else?
That's it.
And what else?
Any new business?
No, all right, so on to your motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and material of its shares. Excel Recycling LLC versus Ms. Pacheco, Robert Jones and Charles Sullivan individually and as members of this Freetown Select Board. C A number one seven seven three, C V zero zero six one two. Um, I don't think you can do the second one because you will not have a quorum, because I will not.
I, I talked to Will today and I can just relay my. Want to, to.
Okay, directly.
All right.
So just on that one, I'll make that motion that we, uh, enter executive session.
And I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.